You'll notice one of them is committee meetings. We have some agenda items on there that need to be discussed in the council meetings. So we'll start with committee meetings. I'm going to turn it first over to Chairman David Basket, Parks and Leisure Committee.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to start off with the Parks and Leisure Committee discussing the new senior center. We have taken the, we made the decision to place the senior center at the City Park across from Splashville. Right now, we're going through some design process and bid updates, I guess you would say, Jason. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We're working through those and the budget again and hope to have something for the committee and then council to vote on in the next few weeks.
Okay, perfect. So, once we get that, we will have a better timeline set on when we can get ready to start breaking ground on that. Any questions from the committee on this right now? No? Okay. Well, we look forward to having that. And Jason, if you could keep us updated in the meantime. And we'll save any other discussions for later.
Yes, sir.
I want to give a Parks and Rec update on projects. If Darren could come up and share with us what's going on at the park. I don't know if y'all have been by there and seen the updates to the park, but they're really impressive. And youth basketball started this week and it was fantastic. Refs were great.
We got more compliments than complaints, so I'll take that in.
It was great. I didn't hear any, I didn't hear one complaint about Spart basketball.
I'll forward you some.
And that's the first time I've done that.
I'll be happy to forward you a couple of emails. You can talk to a few people for me.
But my son did listen.
Well, you lost and you don't have any complaints. I feel pretty good about that. So, a couple of brief updates, because I know we're going to get to the Parks, the master plan update, and that's going to take a little bit longer. So, the two big projects we have going on in the park right now are the lighting project, the field lighting project. So, if you drive through the park right now, all the lights at Optimus, St. Gobain, and Mclasky are down, so all the wood poles have been removed. And their hanging lights, they were still hanging lights today, actually, on NYC two, or NYC one today. Two is already done. And then we've got another crew that's working on Lions Club Field as well. So Lions Club Field already has the pole bases set for the next phase. They'll go ahead and they're hanging lights and they'll be putting those light poles up. So, we're well underway on that project. We think we'll see a finish date. They say February first-ish. I'm going to tell you it's probably going to be mid-February, because I've never seen construction move on time. But those guys are here four days a week and they work 10, 12 hours a day, so they're moving pretty quickly. The other update, which is exciting, because I think we've been working about the, on this for a while now, probably two years on the inclusive playground or something like that, raising money. Phase one of the inclusive playground is now done. We have a punch list walk tomorrow, so I guess it's not 100% complete, because I have a few things I'd like them to look at before I'll sign off on it. And so, we meet at 10 o'clock tomorrow morning on that. But phase one is the first two sections of the four sections that we're doing. So, phase one includes what's going to look like a truck with a slide out the back of it, and then includes a swing set area, and then it's turfed on top. So, for easier access for everybody. So, that phase is done. Now, we've got to get started on raising money for the next phase. So, I think it's exciting. I think it'll help us raise money now that we've got the first section done, so people can see what we're actually moving towards. So, other than that, it's just a bunch of little projects going on in the park, a bunch of cleaning and removing stuff. If you go by Mclasky Field, you'll see that a concession stand's been removed. It honestly made the field look a lot different just to take that away. So, taking away some things, cleaning up some things, doing stuff like that. So, that's kind of our update for where we stand right now on our two major construction projects.
Darren, I appreciate it. I know that you've gotten a lot of compliments on the job you've been doing, so thank you. And lots of people have reached out and said how good the park's looking.
I appreciate it.
Any questions from the committee?
Good work, Darren. Good work.
Yeah, Darren, you were mentioning to me some things with regard to pavement patching and stuff like that, and also with regard to some, maybe some curb and gutter that we're putting in.
Nick had his guys get a bid for us, and so, the most economical thing for us to do right now is some curb and gutter in some places. We hope that that'll maybe hold the road material in better and extend the life of some of our asphalt areas. But we're looking at, if you come off Bellknap Street, turn into Lions Club Field, curb and gutter down that area, and then curb and gutter into that park area, so we can clean up that parking lot right there that's gravel. And so, we're, and then also, there's an area off, if you're familiar with the Birdsong Amphitheater, where you turn in if you're a bus to park. The buses have kind of done some damage to that area over the years. So, Randy Singleton came out and looked at that. He's going to have his guys look at that. They think they can repair that in-house. So, we're looking at a couple of different projects. We hope. Jason sent some money aside for us at the beginning of the year, I think, to do some projects like that. So, it's going to help, I think. It'll clean a lot of things up to have some curb and gutter in that park in some areas.
Good.
So, we're working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Darren. All right. Next, I want to get a master plan update on the park. As to Mitch here, too, he's been working diligently to get us a master plan in line.
You don't expect us to read that, do you? Oh, come on.
I know Mitch is...
Yeah, there's a bunch of words in there.
Mitch has met with several people in the community to see what the wants and needs are for the community. I've been a part of a couple of those meetings, and I think we've got a good group of people that are giving input on what they need and want for Parks and Rec and Seamill.
And you're not done yet.
And we're not done yet.
In fact, I sent an email today to Darren to go ahead and get scheduled two public meetings. And then, I'd like to have a workshop that involves council and the Parks Board and the steering committee all together, hopefully in the February or first part of March. My target right now, schedule-wise, is to look toward the end of March to complete the project. Let me back up a minute. My name is Mitch Wright. My company is Vista Planning and Design. I've met many of you, but not all of you, I don't think. And I was involved a little bit on the downtown master plan and then seeming right into the Parks and Recreation master plan. So, it's been quite an amazing and pleasurable experience. I enjoy coming up here. So, I'm going to jump right in. There's a lot of stuff to what I have written and presented here already. It's pretty dense. There's a lot of big projects, big-ticket money items. Don't let that scare you, because there's also a lot about economic development to help fund some of these projects as well, and I'll get into that. So, Blake, if you will scroll with me. That's just a cover, and then, you know, the folks here in the city working. Council resolution it. Once you hopefully approve this plan, you know, we'll add a document onto that page right there to be a little more official. Table of contents is kind of a work in progress. I have not written an executive summary. That's typically at the end. The introduction kind of sets the stage where we did a lot of work on the downtown plan. A lot of stuff is written about parks as it relates to downtown and the rest of the city. And so, as you read through the document, you'll see a lot of these themes have popped up. Now, the next one, Chapter Five, is where we get into the meat of it all. You have eight recognized parks in the city, but only half of them have actually been developed. And so, you probably don't even, are not even aware of the other three or four parks. Number seven down south is a patch of land in the Elks Ridge subdivision. It's kind of wedged up underneath a high-power line. Number six at the top, that's Prairie Wind, a big open field area up there. There is number five, which is to the east of City Park, which is kind of a backwater track of land, very hard to access. These are projects we need to work on. Okay, Blake, that park system, overall recommendations. As I go through this project, you know, there are themes and projects that have floated to the top over the course of time that really deal with the overall park system. These are things like ultimately hiring a consultant to do an overall ADA evaluation of your park system. Another one is playground safety. That's another one to get, and you want an outside consultant to do it. Otherwise, that burden, the legal burden falls on to your staff here. So, you really want that third-party kind of evaluation on both ADA and playground safety. But there's other, you know, you can see there's 10 bullet points there. These are overarching projects or big projects. The rec center's on there, senior center's on there. Remodeling City Park, which is one of the main points when I first gave a proposal to the city that folks were interested in paying attention to. So, when you get a more complete draft, you'll see writing that addresses all of those spread across those two pages. I'm showing you a two-page view, because that's how I had this laid out. Would you hold up the draft I gave you? The format is an 11 by 17. And so, it's not going to be something you have in your back pocket, but it's going to be something that's easily read. Probably plenty of spaces to write notes. I want this to be, you know, after a couple of years, and just a dirty document with everybody's notes in it. This project is a dynamic project that you will work on over time. Blake, let's go to the next grouping there. The slide on the left, the page on the left, is just looking, drilling down into each of those parks and calling about the inventory of each parks. That's a requirement of Texas Parks and Wildlife. So, I go through, and yes, they have grills. No, they don't have shade, or those kinds of things. And that's also being reviewed and finalized. Let's go through these. There's a two-page spread on City Park, which I haven't done a lot of writing on just yet. We can scroll, Blake. But each of the parks have been represented, and I will continue to fill out each of these pages as we go through. Let's go, scroll through, Blake. Yeah, go ahead and get all the way. These are each of the parks, little aerial photos. There's Elks Ridge right there, that little patch on the backside of a subdivision, kind of an awkward spot, but that could have a useful key. Okay, scroll a little more. Creekside there is way up in the northeast on the side. It's, you know, it's the floodplain of that particular multifamily project, and they gave to the city for their parkland dedication. One of the themes that came out of this process is a need for the city to review their subdivision ordinances and make sure that their parkland dedication fees are up to standards today. That you're not getting $5 and, you know, and expected to do something with that. But also, the criteria of the land is being dedicated, if they have the land to dedicate. You know, a builder can't build on the floodplain, but he sure wants to dedicate his parks and get off the hook on that category. But some cities are now implementing a parkland development fee. So, dedication fee, you know, money in lieu of, or land that has uplands you can build and, you know, a lot of lowlands or floodplain land that you can use. But the dedication fee is money that goes toward actually building things, you know, grooming, grooming the land, adding a trail, putting in some signage or an entryway, maybe some parking spaces, those kinds of things. The gap analysis right here, this is a useful exercise. The red circles are a quarter-mile radius, which is about a 15-minute walk. The blue circles are a half-mile radius, and then the yellow circles, which are hard to see on there, is a one-mile radius. These are criteria that are set up by National Recreation Parks Association, and is recognized industry-wide to identify where in your city you actually need to add parks or where you're park deficient. You've got a pretty good spread. My goal is a little bit more density in parkland than NRPA. So, looking at the next chart, that's just the red circles. Scroll down right there. The green is where I have mapped by aerial. It's not completely accurate. Those are all the residential neighborhoods in the city. Where there's not coloration on the aerial, those are commercial areas, or Tarleton University, as you can see right in the middle. The red stars are school sites, including Tarleton Holdings. And then, the blue stars are significant tracts of land that appear to have not ever been developed. And so, the neighborhoods north and a little bit west of downtown, those are going to be the most challenging areas to try to get some walkability to the parks in that area. One notion that has come up to me is, you know, if there is a house that is, you know, degraded to the point where, you know, maybe it's condemned, or maybe it takes a whole lot of money to upgrade, and it goes on to the market for sale. It may be worth it for the city to pick up if it's in a strategic place. And maybe the structure is fine to where you can just open it up, take the walls down, have a pavilion, and then have it as a small neighborhood park. And that would go a long ways. And that was actually called out in the surveys, and I'll get to that in a little bit. So, this is just looking at that 15-mile walk and the related neighborhoods. Now, I think, you know, working with the school districts, you know, the red stars up there, you could probably get some of their lands, some of their parkland and fields, sports fields and so forth, opened up and available to be used. That's a discussion that goes on in every city. These next maps are floodplain maps. That's another opportunity where land is just simply not developable, but useful in terms of natural areas in parks. And so, that's another area where we really need to focus some attention on acquisitions of lands at, you know, a basement level of rates. It's, you know, it's not developable, to get some additional parklands in the city. Chapter six in the report talks about the Bosque River Trail corridor. Those are two pages out of that study. I altered it, on the next slide, I altered it so that the trail itself is highlighted. That's the master plan trail. And then, you know, their vision statements and their goals to get that accomplished. A lot of that's been done. Go to the next one, please, Blake. This map, if you look at City Park, the big yellow patch, you see the green built trail. That is the existing trail that goes all the way up to Lingaville Road right there, and that's as much as that's been done. The orange trail is the remaining master plan Bosque River Trail segments that have not been completed. The south one goes to your wastewater treatment plant and a little bit further than that. And the north segment goes, wraps around to the golf course in the north, and then there's a spur that touches the Optimus Park. I have taken upon myself, because I know that it is a very successful process, project, to try to create a looping trail system in the city. In so doing, you become attractive to cyclists all over the region, all over the state, all over the country to come for competitions. And also, it's, people are not really excited about getting on a trail, going all the way to the end, and then turning around and coming back on the same path. And so, on each project that I work on, I'm striving to find a looping system. Now, that blue area is connecting the north to the south, and that's a lot of trail. But this is not to say that the city is going to go out there and buy that. Going back again to the subdivision ordinance and also to the Bosque River Trail, what needs to be put in your ordinances is that if a developer comes in and develops a large tract of land that has the trail master plan involved in that land, then they should be obligated to build that section of trail. Now, you know, they may grumble, but they've got a trail in their neighborhood to city specifications, and that trail will be used, even incrementally. And so, that's a, you know, you may grant fund some sections, but a lot of that is an open landscape that with the growth that the city is going through right now, you're going to have a lot of this land developed in the next 10 years with subdivisions. And those subdivisions will be obligated to start incrementally adding in these trail segments on their nickel. And their HOAs actually will be taking care of it, unless you negotiate otherwise. So, there's also segments of trails, the purple trails going in through the city. That is allowing, and you can see it's centered on Tarleton University as well as downtown, and it also touches the high school. And that gives people access, you know, cycling, jogging, hiking, to do much smaller loop runs or cycle trips, you know, before work or during lunchtime or something like that. So, putting together, and it's going to take maybe 20 years to realize this entire system. But in five or 10 years, you may have a substantial system beginning to start. Now, the ones inside the city limits, that's about restriping the streets, for instance, or expanding the sidewalks, or doing things like that to help that cyclist navigate those streets and have those as dedicated bike lanes. Okay, let's go on, Blake. So, that's just a lot of description. And I have a little mileage thing up there on that right-side page. We don't need to zoom in on that, but you can look at the miles that that represents, and it's a significant amount. And that would be attractive for cyclists all over the country if you have events centered around cycling. And again, you know, looking at economic development, that is one of these tools that could be a promotion for that. Chapter seven is a big chapter. It's the public engagement. It starts off with steering committee and Parks Board getting together for some workshops, because we needed to create a vision statement. Now, I had been saying that there is an existing vision statement, but we couldn't seem to put our hands on it at the time. We were looking for it. So, what you see there is a, you know, in all of this, everything on here is draft, so keep that in mind. The vision statement that was crafted is, our vision for Stevensville is for our Parks Recreation System to be well-rounded system for all ages and abilities with a wide variety of activities, including organized sports, natural spaces, and other physical activities, while also offering many opportunities. and other physical activities while also offering many opportunities in arts and culture. The arts and culture is a nod toward where the Bosque Trail passes through the east Washington area where you've got a lot of cultural elements, including historic downtown. But the museums and the churches and all that that's over there. And part of that is also a linkage to the downtown master plan. So that's the draft statement. But we also put up a poster. You see, those are two posters you see on the right side page. Some generic vision statements for folks to discuss. And then the other one is some generic goals for folks to consider as well. And you see the dots. I made them get out of their chair and go put dots on comments. And then there's some handwritten comments. And so on the next page where there's a bunch of writing there, it says crafting the goals. And you can see I've taken, I've digested the green dot goals into, if you'll go to that next, yeah, right there. That's the list of those goals. I put them on a chart. That's kind of how they floated in terms of votes. And then from that, you had five goals really float to the top. And then several things just simply weren't addressed in the goals. And so the page on the right is me taking all this information developed from the workshops. And this is, these were two workshops, kind of back to back. From that, I also added in some information that I knew was important, including things like overall ADA and stuff like that. So the resulting eight goals is what will be kind of the immediate guidepost when we get into the list of actual projects and then the prioritization of those projects. That's the very last thing that happens with putting this whole master plan together. Next pages? So the chart on the right, that is looking at the online survey. And I hope everybody had a chance to do the survey. So on the left, that blue chart is off the internet. It's the population breakdown of Stevensville. On the right is the population breakdown of who responded to the online survey. And so you need to kind of keep that in mind because there were 220 some odd between the ages of 30 and 50 that responded to the survey and only about 23 60 and older that responded to the survey. And I have two main groups of citizens that I typically pay a lot of attention to. And that's the young ones that can't really speak for themselves, you know, up into the teens who don't pay attention to all this, but they like it when they get it. And then the senior classifications because we need to honor them as well. And so that chart just kind of goes through some percentages. So you need to understand that when you see a chart and something is way skewed out as in the votes, that, you know, there may not have been enough seniors to really get their voice heard. You know, things like the Senior Center didn't really garner a whole lot of votes. But, you know, most of the people that answered, you know, are families with, you know, elementary school or middle school or high school kids. So I'm going to just scroll through these pretty quick right here. Blake, if you would, go to the next one. Right there, and I put a little kind of subtitle on here, "The Art of Crafting Some of These Charts." Several of the comments in the online survey were right in your answers. And so those are very difficult to sort of analyze. And what I do is I plug all those into an Excel spreadsheet and they get scored. That's the chart on the left of each of those. And then I develop a pie chart that, so you have it written, you know, in a ranking of one through 10 on those particular charts and then a graphic so it's more easily digested, you know, your eyes can go right to. The big slices of pie are the biggest votes. So please spend some time when you have a chance. I gave Darren a flash drive that's got all of this digital. There's actually some things I've added in since I'm on here from what he's got printed in front of him. He's going to distribute that so everybody has a chance to spend some time on whatever section is most important for you. Okay, Blake, let's scroll through some of these. I don't need to spend a whole lot of time, but there's a, you can see, keep going. Let's just go all the way through it. You can see there's a lot of information. Now, on the right end ones, the list is much larger than the chart that shows up here. And all of those lists of every single comment that was made will be stuffed and it's on this. It will be down in the appendices. So, you know, if you see something on that line, you know, that ranked number 17, you say, well, what all is this? You can go down and read some of these comments. Because each of the, there's 38 questions on the online survey. There's 38, well, not 38 spreadsheets, but there's spreadsheets for each one that's a right end comment. Let's go on past all the survey stuff. Keep going, all right, stop there. One of the big discussions we had when we had the Steering Committee workshop and the Parks Board workshop was City Park. Now, there's two camps, really, really three camps. One camp is let's do more with City Park in terms of attracting sports and tournaments and so forth. The other camp is, you know, City Park doesn't, is too small or we've got too many things going on there or is too much rearranging. Let's go out and find a new tract of land and build a sports complex so we can attract tournaments from all over central Texas or statewide. And then a middle sort of camp is let's work on both of those. Let's upgrade the facilities in City Park in the sports category, but let's spend some time going out there and identifying a useful tract of land to work toward building the sports complex. The little chart you see on that left page is kind of talking about a timeline. And those, you can see numbers, I know that's hard to see, but you can see one, two, three, four, five, six. Those are years. And those are, so it may be five years or whatever that is, six years, to get one out of the ground, a sports complex. So while you are upgrading the facilities, like Darren's already doing in City Park, to, you know, improve your recreation sports experience, you can also be working on things like developing an ad hoc committee to go out and do a land search. And then you've got to acquire that land. You know, that may be a year just right there. And then the design process takes a long time. So it's a long time thing to actually get a sports complex, you know, acquired, the land acquired and designed and up and running. So, you know, why not do both? Why not that middle camp? And so that's what this all talks about. And you see, the top left photo is today's park. The graphic on the right of that is the original master plan, a version of the original master plan that today's park kind of follows, okay? Scroll up a little bit, Blake. The, no, the other way, I'm sorry. That graphic on the left is me putting everything to the side and say, what could City Park be? And so I drew that sketch, that concept. And there's, you can't read it from here, but there's all sorts of notes all around it about what to do. And then the graphic next to it is staff, Darren, and I presume you had a lot of conversations with others, what to do with City Park today that's not interfering with significant features of the park. So, you know, I can't carry City Park through to a complete schematic because there's a lot of discussion that has to happen about that part first. So the recommendation is going to be, you know, let's get a committee together and start to really study this, drill down deep and figure out which direction is this park going to go. Now, I threw in the exhibit on the right there. Those are various sports parks that are in different cities. The Colony, I think that's in the Metroplex. Old Settlers, that's Round Rock. Keller is just north of Fort Worth. And that's Brownwood down there, probably your closest similar-sized city competitor. So that gives you a little view, and the acreages are in there too. City Park is about 119 acres. It is almost completely in the floodplain. So building big facilities there, you know, kind of becomes a no-no because, you know, at some point, you're going to get, you know, three feet of water in there or something. This is one of the other large projects, you know, I'm kind of in this, let's go get a sports complex built on new land outside. You can put up the lights, you know, you're not bothering existing neighborhoods. I'm in that camp because it is a real economic driver for a lot of cities. Now, scroll down a little bit, Blake, please. That first two-page spread, you know, with economic development, kind of talks about this a little bit more. And that map on the right is, or at County. You've got Fort Worth on the top right. You've got Abilene to the west. You've got Brady Lampaces and Temple on the south edge. You've got a whole lot of folks in between that would love to not be going to the Metroplex for a tournament. I heard that over and over again on the surveys and in conversations, that folks are tired of driving, getting up at four in the morning to drive to the Metroplex to, you know, go do a tournament, try to get there for sign-in at seven o'clock or eight o'clock. So that's an important feature. Now, continuing on to the economic development theme, scroll down a little bit, Blake. Here is a real low-hanging fruit that may not have been considered, but it's also more about natural landscapes, is bird watching or nature tourism. You can see the charts on the left, these are cities that have bird watching festivals in the state of Texas. And they bring in a lot of money. People come and they stay for a weekend. Hummingbird Festival in Marfa or in the Big Bend area is a huge draw for people. And down in the valley, I think that on a, there's a comment in there, I forget exactly what it says, but I think they bring in $5 million in the McAllen area over a weekend just because of the festival and the bird watching. Now, the photograph on the right, top right there is the aerial with downtown and City Park at the top and following the Bosque Trail River down to the wastewater treatment plant. Wastewater treatment plants, those wetlands out there is going to be a huge draw for bird watchers. And so developing the already planned Bosque River Trail down to that point, you've already got your canvas for a bird watching festival in place. That top right aerial is just zooming in on the wetlands down there at the wastewater treatment plant. So again, that is huge economic development draw. It's also the low-hanging fruit in terms of the dollars that you've got to put into. Developing the trail, of course, will be the first step. Packaging that event in and of itself is kind of the big enchilada to kind of take on and getting that out there. Scrolling down a little bit, this is straight out of what was the downtown master plan, talking about music culture. And when I was showing you the maps of City Park, one of the things I did on my sketch was expand that area of Bird Song to accommodate a size grounds for a music festival that reaches that threshold of 10,000 people, I think, to actually be a moneymaker. And so this was going to get rewritten because I just snatched this out of the format I had for the downtown plan. But again, you can see all those towns. Every town you see around Stevensville with a circle on it are towns that has a significant musician population or an active musician population that would be coming here for a music festival. Okay, let's keep scrolling. These, I'm at the end here. These are just demographics straight off the internet. That one chart on the left is what I showed you previously at the beginning of the public engagement. The appendices are where I stuff a lot of data. Like I mentioned, the online written responses are all down in there. Some articles will be in there. Also will be putting the whole plan, the Bosque River Quarter Plan will be in there. And your whole last comprehensive plan will be in there. I like to try to group all these plans together. So they're in one place, you know? If you're like, well, where's that comp plan, you know, where is that? So you get it all in one-stop shopping. So you can reference it for anything else. That really concludes everything I've got to say. You know, I could stay here and read some of this off to you, but I'm sure that's not what you're interested in. And I would love to hear any comments or questions. And actually, by the way, you all get to do some surveys too. These are simple postcard surveys where what are the three most important priorities for parks and recreation? How can parks and recreation improvements additions contribute to economic development in Stevensville? And the third one, what perspective, analysis or strategy should be included in the final report? I can't think of everything, but I know you guys can help with that. So here you go, everybody gets one. They're self-addressed and stamped. So what you've got to do is put your stuff on there, drop it in the box. There you go. Thank you.
Wait, any additional questions for Mitch at all from the committee or anyone in council?
The rest of these will go to the Planning Commission and whoever else there and sees they have to get a feedback.
Any questions from anybody? Mitch, thank you so much. I appreciate all the hard work you're doing. And I know you've spent a lot of time gathering all this information and spent a lot of time with me, so spent a lot of time with Darren. And we appreciate it very much. Look forward to seeing the finished project.
Well, thank you and I enjoy doing it. It's favorite work.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting.
Next committee is Mark Clinton, Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, I've called this Public Works team. Our order that I remember the president, you're going to get tired of listening to Mr. Williams this evening. Sir, the agenda first is to, a discussion about the amendment for the operations agreement with Jacobs at the wastewater treatment plant. This is a recurring amendment, so Mr. Williams, fill us in with the details.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So each and every year, we review the agreement for the operations of the wastewater treatment plant. Jacobs is our contract operator. After some good negotiations this year, they've agreed to a 3.5% operational base rate increase. If we were to go by the letter of the contract and use the CPI tables that are in that contract, they would actually be entitled to an 8.52% increase. Obviously, that's just massive and outside of our scope. So they've agreed to a 3.5% base rate increase. The other side of that contract is our operational costs that are what we call rebatable items. And those are pass-through costs. So it costs us to take the sludge that we get from the treatment plant and take it to the landfill. So our permit requires that. And so there's a pass-through cost for that. There's also a chemicals charge. Now, we use Jacobs to purchase those chemicals, but being a global company, they have a, they just command a much better buying power than we do for those base chemicals for treatment. So those costs rose significantly. We went from, well, let me start on the operational cost. The 3.5% operational base rate increase is just over $23,000, which I thought was a significant savings compared to the 8.52% that they would be allocated if we went by the letter of the contract. That's almost a $32,000 savings that they graciously conceded this year. Our pass-through rebatable costs, first sludge hauling went up about $11,000 from $87,000 to $98,000. And that's straight cost from Waste Connections to go and dump that at the landfill as required by our permit. Now, the other big cost is our chemicals cost. And we've seen that just in our own water operations. The cost of chlorine is almost doubled, if not more than doubled, for our own water treatment process. So they did increase that from $79,400 to $134,000. The good news is some of those fuel costs are starting to come down. We feel like that these numbers are hopefully going to be conservative and at the end of this contract year, we'll get a check back on those rebatable items. this contract year, we'll get a check back on those rebatable items. The overall contract for operations for next year would be nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars, rounding to the nearest dollar. That's about eighty-nine thousand dollars over what it was last year in total operations. The budget that was approved allocated almost eight-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars, that's about a sixty-four thousand dollar shortfall. Now, going over this with finance and city manager, we feel like there's plenty of funds available to absorb that cost based on the increased revenue from the updated sewer rates. Happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Any questions for Nick on the contract? We need to move this forward to the council.
Yes, sir.
For approval, final approval.
Yes, sir.
You ready for that?
Ready.
Okay. Members of the committee, what is your question?
Chair, I'd make the motion to send a positive recommendation to council for amended agreement presented.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? You don't see the vote all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most closed nay. That will move forward to the council with a favorable recommendation. Second item on the agenda is to discuss the four repairs at the Lilian Storage Tank. Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. So, earlier this year, we had a discussion about the one-million-gallon ground storage tank at the Lilian Pump Station, and we had budgeted one hundred and ten thousand dollars to make the repairs that we knew about in the wall seams that had started to leak. So we brought that forward with a little bit of a cost savings. When we got in there and started to clean the tank, we got to the bottom of it, and these repairs that are needed were not evident. You just couldn't see them until we cleaned the tank out of the bottom. And you can see some of the photographs here from the cleaned tank that there are holes in the bottom of this tank, and so these glass-lined panels, not only do the seams need to be sealed, but some of these panels actually need to be replaced. So, we did request a quote from the same company that does this, which is the only company recommended by the manufacturer of the tank to perform these repairs. Came in about one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do that. So, with the savings from our original contract, that puts us at a deficit of about one hundred and twenty-two thousand four fifty-seven. Not about, exactly, one hundred and twenty-two four fifty-seven. Now, the tank is, the repairs are finished, we're gonna start filling that tank and bringing it back into service. When you do that with a bolted tank, you wanna bring it up slowly, that's what we're gonna start to do, then we're gonna sample the water and make sure everything's good, and then we're gonna put it back in service by next week. These repairs, and you can see the, one of the pictures in the middle on the right-hand side, there's a black spot, and that's a mastic material that covers up one of those holes, and that's what the repairs look like today. Those repairs are temporary. If this repair is approved, those panels have an approximate thirty-six-week lead time from the date that they're ordered. These are specialty tanks, these are specialty panels. So what we're asking for is the ability to go and purchase these panels so that we can get this tank back in service as soon as possible. Now, to pay for this, we had some savings on our three-seventy-seven elevated storage tank. We had five hundred thousand dollars allocated for that project, and it came in at about three-hundred-and-fifty, three-fifty-seven-nine. So we've got one hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred dollars available to make up that difference. If we use that savings, we'll still have just under twenty thousand dollars available to pay for that. That'd be our recommendation, to use those funds to pay for this repair.
What's the, what's the life expectancy for the repairs to make? When is this actually gonna begin?
Well, this tank is approximately twenty years old. We would hope that we would get another twenty years out of it. Obviously, I've got some concerns about the corrosion that you see here, so I would tell you fifteen years, I wouldn't have a problem saying that at all, based on these repairs.
So, you're not gonna fill it up until we get the new panels?
No, no, we're gonna go ahead and fill it back up. We're gonna go ahead and fill it back up.
So then we're gonna fill it up, and then empty it, and then replace the panels?
Yes, ma'am.
So that made, the temporary repairs have been done?
Yes, they were, they were scheduled to finish those today, and so, that was what I was reported to, so, you know, give me a little grace there, but the report I received was that we're gonna be able to fill that tank up and get it back in service next week. We just wanna bring it up real slowly so that we don't cause any of those panels to shift.
So they're saying thirty-six weeks, so?
If we order them, right, if we order them tomorrow, approximately forty weeks before we have them in hand and have those folks here to take the tank down and install those panels.
Any other questions for Nick on this one?
So, just to make sure I understand the financial part of it, we had more than enough savings from the elevated tank to pay for these repairs?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. We weren't twenty thousand short, there's still another twenty thousand on that?
That's correct. There's still an excess of just over nineteen, nineteen thousand six forty-three.
Chair, I make the motion to approve the additional repairs to Lilian Ground Storage Tank as presented.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? You don't see the vote all in favor, saying this forward to the council. A positive recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most closed nay. That will move forward to the council with a positive recommendation. The last item on our agenda is, if you recall, when we worked up a deal with Tech Dot on the Graham Street project, put brick in, one of the stipulations was that we would take ownership of that road surface, and I believe that's what I'm agreeing on about, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir, that is correct. So, received a draft, I'm sorry, a template resolution from Tech Dot, and we've put that into a draft form, and that's on the second sheet of your attachment here for Graham. So a little bit of history about the project. The city advanced-funded Tech Dot two million dollars to install the water sewer along Graham from approximately the City Park up to Lingaville Highway. And that project is scheduled to be finished, they're telling me now, February, there'll be a resolution to that project. There are two change orders that we approved, because when we, when we bid it, the two million dollars that Tech Dot required us to pay in the advanced funding agreement, there was still a balance of two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars. The actual bid came in much less than that two million dollars. So we did approve two smaller change order items for just over eleven thousand dollars and just under sixteen thousand dollars. When we did that, a little bit later, we came forward with that, that last change order to put brick in on the east side of the courthouse. And that change order was two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That leaves us with a deficit of eleven thousand seven thirty-five sixty-seven. What we proposed to do with that, just under twelve thousand dollars, is take it out of this year's street maintenance budget.
Questions for Nick on this one? Need action to send this to the full council?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Chair, I'll make the motion to send the transfer of ownership of one-hundred block of Graham Avenue from Tech Dot to Stevensville with a positive recommendation to council.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? You don't see the vote all in favor of this item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most closed nay. This will move forward to the council with a positive recommendation. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir. With no other agenda, the committee will adjourn the meeting at six-twenty-two and convene in the special city council meeting, and I'll turn it over to, I guess, to you?
Sarah.
Sarah. He passed the buck really fast. Was it downhill all the way?
Mayor, council, good evening. Tonight is just a cursory review, approval of the annual permit for CareFly ground maintenance. We took it to committee back in November with a positive approval to bring it forward. They meet all the tenants of the ordinance and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, chief? Is there any action to take tonight?
Approval of the application.
Approved their certificate.
Okay. Here, do I hear a motion? Do I have any questions? Hear no question, hear a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the application from CareFly for EMS annual permit as presented.
Second. Our motion is second. See the vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item. Thanks, sir. That was quick. I get to go home.
Mr. Mayor, council, this second item is regarding an easement for Encore for their substation adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. So, if you haven't been out there, there's a large section of land, as you come in the gate to the wastewater treatment plant, Encore's moved very swiftly, and so they're just about finished with their construction there. What they're trying to do is get an easement from the northern end of the wastewater treatment plant to bring it down to the tie-in of their substation. It's just a matter of looping their system, so... What benefits Encore adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant? Benefits the wastewater treatment plant. So, we wanna make sure that they have plenty of power to supply to us. It also works for the rest of the community as well, because this substation does power the community as well. That's, that's really it. There's really nothing more to this item.
Questions for Nick?
Is there, will it be any pull work in that easement, or is it just action?
So they, they will be setting poles and bringing in an overhead transmission, but we did negotiate with them so that should we need to expand in the future, that the city still reserves all rights of construction underneath that easement for utilities. Obviously, no vertical construction. We did reserve the right to put in our own utilities and expand the plant.
Others? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the Encore's substation easement at the wastewater treatment plant as presented.
Your second? See the vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Next item is the Lilian Ground Storage Tank, the repairs that we just spoke about in the committee meeting. Glad to, glad to talk about it again.
Mark, you have a motion?
I do. Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we approve, this did come from recently held committee meeting with a favorable recommendation. I move that we approve the repairs at the Lilian Ground Storage Tank as presented.
Second.
Our motion is second. See the vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
I'll take care of that one.
You'll take care of that one?
Yes, sir.
He dumping everything else.
Mr. Mayor, council, if you recall from budget, we placed several vehicles, pickups in across various departments to update and replace fleet vehicles. So what this is, is bid for one three-quarter-ton pickup for Public Works, and then eleven half-ton trucks. Some, the stuff for Public Works out of his enterprise funds will be cash purchase, everything else will be financed like we do our police cars and other vehicles. Everything's come back within budget the way we needed it to, and fits within the appropriate amounts that we set aside. So, I'll ask for your permission to approve the bid to Brunner Motors and approve the financing resolution that Monica has attached, and...
So that's four and five, then?
Y- yes, sir. And, and then give you permission to sign the contracts for the financing.
Okay. Do I, any questions? Item four.
Will they put in the budget with the purpose of financing?
Anybody else? Do I hear a motion?
So you need a motion for the...
Approval of the half-ton and three?
One.
Then we'll do the resolution after.
Yes. One, to approve the bids to Brunner Motors, and then approve...
Randy will make, make it due to you for motions.
Yes, sir.
So I hear a motion?
Mayor, make the motion to award the bid to Brunner Motors for the twelve pickups as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? See the vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is consider adopting the resolution for financing.
Mayor, move that we approve the resolution number twenty-twenty-three-dash-R-dash-two.
Which would include the ability to sign the contract, is that correct?
Yes, it's according on the legislation, it actually says, I think, three, uh, which you, uh, take that.
So it'd be the authorization of the leasing agreements and the authority to sign?
Yes.
Okay, have a mo, is that, oh. Have a motion, Mark, second it? See the vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's, there's no other items on the regular agenda tonight. We're going to reconvene, we're gonna recess here and reconvene executive session, and we'll be back.